Did you plug it into the little dangly cord?
I will.
I think we're good now.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, why?
What is this? Oh, this is for tonight.
That one's waking up.
It's on strike.
Yeah.
My doo thing was being really sexy. Like, it wasn't getting internet down here.
I'm in.
It's trying like three times.
And there.
Hello.
My signature, my cursive is so freaking ass terrible.
No, no, no. Oh, my gosh. Check. Um, no, she was just asking if anybody else was gonna be speaking tonight so we could make sure we get names. But I was like, I know, it's Sonia's name, okay, so it's weird.
You notice both Sonia but not Kreisel, right? Kreisel?
Kreisel.
Kreisel, yes. Well, Ral rhymes with cow, so it's the same kind of thing.
Yeah. You had to like, yeah.
Funny going to the barn and seeing him scratch out the beetle.
Neimeyer?
Neimeyer.
Really?
In German.
Yeah.
And vowels and stuff, yeah. So. The family will be okay with that. Yeah. So.
Are we getting that? There we go.
Yeah, um, so for, I think, comp plan stuff, what we've been passing through probably go through, say, you know, what's this about?
Yeah.
Planning is only here, Vandoval's.
No, no, no.
Process gonna look like. Um, I think I have another memo. I just will be all three there. Quick little map, so I'll have Jeff's running the screen. So I'll just have to run down that if you wanna go through any part of the plan. But they've been, all these days, um, for the most part, have been through comp plan process before. Yeah. Yeah, just a preview of, we just scheduled, we're gonna do our public hearing in June.
He's been talking for five, his first two.
Oh, yeah, God, yeah.
But yeah, here.
They come by every time.
If they have any questions or, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so good. Just hope that five minutes. Wow. Good job, Ian.
Boy, it is a lot of people.
We're outnumbered.
What do you do? My brother-in-law is texting me.
Yeah.
Patrick's here helping.
There he is.
We're not supposed to talk to each other. We're like, no, I was just telling you, I'm gonna spell your name off.
Yeah.
My, uh, my brother-in-law says, hey, you're not a town. I'm here right now.
Hi, Patrick.
Might have a couple of years after, so I'm gonna go find my track.
I'll clarify that very afterwards too, but the comp and amendment stuff, I think, in the past, we've sent out all.
Oh, what?
Yes. I remember one time we were freaking out. Yeah.
Hey, Jess. On that, on that, that next plan that's coming through, why is there two missing pages? Which one? I've got my little cord thing in here.
Oh, your little protector.
Cord protector that was sticking up my wheels.
Look a little windblown, John.
Took the dog for a run, just another day.
Run, I'm right in the little tongue. Hey, this is a dog-friendly workplace, so welcome to bring him in.
She would just be beside herself.
Wouldn't be distracting at all.
I'd be fun. Have a dog right here, it's kinda.
Mark and I had a Zoom call this morning, but one of the guys was asking if I brought my daughter to work. It's like, oh. This is my escape from my job.
We gotta wait till exactly.
I still say a pack and play is the best.
Yeah, the other day, just put her in a giant diaper box, like cardboard box. She was happy as a lamb for thirty minutes. Just threw in like a couple wooden spoons and some spatulas, totally fine. Like, she needs a pack and play. No, she just started pulling up on stuff and crawling, and then she'd crawl over and stand on things.
Maybe not yours.
Yeah.
Nothing is safe anymore.
Things are moving up a little bit.
Up and up, and then to the office. All of my plans are moving to the office, so.
I got the baby fit.
Oh.
Jesus. That's two minutes ago.
Is that at their house there?
How much did you read?
Oh, my God, he's okay.
This part is, I'm gonna read this.
Oh, yeah.
He's in a shoe. I show you them?
I should skip the part under the open means.
Oh, you're following me though. Oh, you can go for doggy.
Oh, yeah. Make sure I say this.
Your dog. Baby.
He can't, he can't walk yet.
But he's got the shoes.
Ready when you are, Greg.
All right.
All right, it is six-thirty, thanks, Joey. Okay, we'll call the meeting in order, please. First item on the agenda is the roll call.
Snowy.
Here.
Bino.
Here.
Molsan.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Polda.
Here.
And Mar, Meyer, and Smithback are excused tonight.
Okay, uh, before we move on, Mr. Mar is not here tonight because his, his wife passed away last night. So Michelle, remember that?
Oh, no.
She's struggled for the last several months with some health difficulties, so, yeah. So remember Larry, please. Move on. Approved the minutes of March third, two thousand twenty-two, Plan Commission, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Molsan?
Second, Bino.
We have a motion, and if a second is ready to discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, under public appearances, is community input. Part of the agenda allows, the agenda allows members of public to provide information to Plan Commission includes both on and off the agenda. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future commission agenda. However, Plan Commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Anybody here discuss anything other than what's on the agenda? Thank you, we'll move on. Item four B, public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation to Village Board of a preliminary and final plat for the parcels at two oh one Liberty Drive, uh, Liberty Park Drive, two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive, and one zero zero two Oregon Parks Avenue. Applicant is Liberty Park LLC. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Staff reports.
Hi, guys, so it's been a, it's been a journey with these parcels, and I think we're almost there. I know, uh, Key and I are ready to, to move on to, to other things here, but, uh, this replat and then the GDP revision, that's the next agenda item, are obviously tied together. These are the parcels that are just north of Beehive, um, just west of Liberty Park, um, north of Omni here. So these changes in the replat, um, and also in the GDP reflects the request from the developer to have lot three, which you could kind of zoom out on that image there. Uh, lot three is the one directly north of Beehive. It was originally just gonna have one duplex on it facing North Bergamont Boulevard, but it's a really, you know, deep lot and had the ability to, um, fit some more housing units on there. So we explored what was, um, able to be done with our comp plan and, uh, came to the conclusion that having two duplex buildings, so a total of four units, but two separated duplex buildings would be doable here. So they'll both be, uh, believe facing the south towards Omni. Um, there'll be a private, you know, driveway to access that, no parking signs along that. So just in case, um, fire, anybody needs to get back there, there'll be some clearance. And, um, this lot will not be able to be zero lot line CSM, since we can't create any landlocked parcels that don't have the road frontage. But we'll either be, you know, rented out, all four units, or it could be condo-ed down the future if they're, um, down the road, if there's, um, you know, an owner occupied model. But, um, the intention, I think, for these still is to have, um, these sold to various builders. And so, um, whether it's one or several, we'll be seeing them, um, down the road for SIPs. So this is just left sort of at the GDP, and then the lots will be sold. But, um, Kio's here, and, um, Jeff and I have been pretty involved in this. So if we can help answer any questions, that our engineers have looked over this, I think, all the utility plans. There was a right-of-way vacation up on the, um, with that on-street parking there that's now been changed. So, um, this could be getting towards the end, wrapping these up, so these lots can be sold.
Thank you. Petitioner have any comments, anything you wanna add? You've talked enough about it. It's up to you, it's up to you. Okay, is there any public input, any public comments regarding this?
I just, where's the drive coming in? Would that be on the, the south side of the lot three, right there?
I'm sorry, you're gonna, I'm s- I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you have to give, no, that's a, gotta give Joy your name and, and address, please.
That's Andy Dawson, representing Beehive, I suppose. So I'm just, just curious, there's no, there's no opposition, just, just more or less curious. And then my only other thought was, um,
Yeah.
being mindful in the future planning for our, our base three. I don't know, there's a little berm there that, where we will likely have to have a retention wall of some sort, I imagine. And then, um, a fence, I would presume that would have to go in. I don't know if that would be all of our responsibility or how that would play out, but is that?
In terms of like a buffer?
What's that?
For a buffer, kind of between the uses of the duplex and, and your business?
Um, I think the way the, the topography is with the land, but, um, mostly. And then there, there is a little, you know, a little privacy concern. So I don't know, um, you know, 'cause the likelihood of that third phase would be, um, a row of windows, which look, you know, and look into private rooms of old, old folks. So I, I don't know if that's just been a thought, so consideration in the, in the plan.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, the plan here is to sell the lots to various builders, and then they would be responsible for coming back to the planning commission with an SIP, which is a specific implementation plan, basically, a site plan. And so at that point, we've seen kind of conceptually how two duplex buildings could fit. I think it had sort of a, the driveway towards the southern end of the parcel, and then the, you know, garages sort of facing south, but probably the majority of the bedrooms and stuff like that for those units more facing the backyards.
Right.
Um, but that would sort of be up to the builder that would end up buying that lot. Um, they wouldn't have to build two buildings, but it would be permitted to, to do so. Um, there's also landscaping requirements for each of the lots, so there'd be an opportunity. And you as a, um, you know, property owner, you know, we'll, we'll notify you too as well when that's coming up. Um, so you can see kind of what the specific plans are for that. And, um, you know, maybe you'll have a little bit better sense of your basing as well. I know you do some fencing anyway for your residents, right? Just to kind of keep them in a safe area. Um, but we can kind of cross the bridge when we get to it, once we actually have, um, some construction plans for that lot. We'll definitely keep you on the loop, though.
Okay with that, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other public input? Plan Commission, anybody have any questions, comments?
The only comment I've got is it, it's just some housekeeping stuff. On one, you've got a twenty-five-foot easement on the west side. And on the drawing that's on the next page, it's twenty on the north and twenty-five on the south. So just some housekeeping, it, it's not a, I'm not worried about it. But just make sure that your engineer gets it straightened out and staff signs off.
Kio, do you know, does it jog like that on the, see how, what he's?
I don't know if that was because of the outlaw, or?
Well, it, it, this is recorded as an easement document, three, four, three ninety-four, one four four nine, and the same here. And then I think on the previous page, I was just looking at that. Obviously, this is a public utility easement. Says to be released. So, yeah, we might just, yeah, we'll just have to check with Ron Kloster, right? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, I think we should handle the preliminary and final replats separately. So we need a motion, recommend the Village, well, I'm sorry, let's back up. Do we have any other discussion by Plan Commission before we enter into a motion? Okay. Need a motion, recommend the Village Board approval of the, um, replat, of a preliminary replat for parcels, two oh one Liberty Drive, two fifty-one Liberty Drive, Liberty Park Drive, and one zero zero two Oregon Parks Avenue. Great, I'll move. Neil, motion?
I'll second contingent, uh, if, I'd like to make a friendly motion that, uh, you amend your, um, the motion to include.
Correction.
Yeah. Correction for the basement.
All right, so we have corrected. We have a second.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We then need a motion, recommend the Village Board, uh, approval of the final replat for the same parcels, two oh one Liberty Park Drive, two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive, one zero zero two Oregon Parks Avenue, with the contingency that the corrections be made regarding lot setbacks.
So moved.
Motion, we have a second. We have a second, I read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thank you. Item, uh, four C, public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation of Village Board for the approval of revised GDP, G, GDP plan for the parcels, same parcels, two oh one Liberty Park Drive, two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive, one zero zero two Oregon Parks Avenue. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Staff report.
Um, just the only other thing I don't think I mentioned, um, before is that the specific use for allowing those two duplex, um, buildings on that one parcel will be group development. So, um, that's the only other revision to the GDP, other than a couple of small changes to setbacks, given the, um, kind of shorter backyard of that lot three site. But otherwise, same area we were just referring to.
Okay. Applicant has no comments? The public have any comments, requests, questions? None. Plan Commission? We all understand what wants to be done. So again, I want you to, at least to say again what you're talking about on the, um, you have any stipulations that you wanna have included in recommendation to Village Board?
Just contingent on the, the plat being recorded.
Okay. Okay. Everybody, well, okay, so we need a motion, recommend the Village Board approval of the revised GDP for the parcels, two oh one Liberty Park Drive, two fifty-one Liberty Park Drive, and one zero zero two Oregon Parks Avenue, contingent upon?
The recording of the replat.
Recording of the plat, yes.
So moved, Molsan?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Bino, second.
Bino, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet. Next item, review and possible approval of resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven. Recommend the adoption of a public participation plan for a comprehensive plan amendment. You bet.
Andy.
So. Wanna make any comments about it?
Sure. Um, so, another year, another, yeah, another year, another set of comprehensive plan amendments. Just trying to, you know, give you guys some job security, so.
Not very comprehensive, dude.
Yeah.
Job security, I think.
So we have got two different areas, um, that will be included in the comprehensive plan amendment. Um, one is for our new library site off Alpine Parkway. Um, that parcel, um, ended up kind of straddling two parcel lines between the old school site and a little bit, um, in that cornfield area of the west side park, kind of the southern end there. Just trying to optimize the best building location. Um, and then Veridian, um, Homes has an option to purchase the remainder of Mary Hill neighborhood on the north end of town. So all of those parcels up there that are outlined. Um, so both of those will require comprehensive plan amendment, uh, one for the library to reestablish where that institutional use will be. And then the remainder will, uh, be that rollholding conservation park use. And then, um, for Veridian, right now, our comprehensive plan shows just single-family homes, and they, and their, uh, concept plans show a little bit of a mix of housing, a couple, um, areas with some duplexes. And I think some single-family homes of varying lot sizes to get kind of a, a range of some affordability levels for folks. Um, as usual, we're gonna have, um, our, um, great help from Vandoval to get, lead us through the comp plan process. And I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to meet yet, um, but Sonia Kreisel is our new, um, consulting planner. So previously worked with Ben Rohr, and then of course Mike Slavney for a long time. Sonia is the former, um, planning director of the city of Pittsburgh, so she's very familiar with our area. But, um, I'll just have you come up if you don't mind just walking us through a little bit, um, schedule and, um, what you all be helping us with with the comp plan.
Good evening, nice to meet you all. Um, as Elise mentioned, Sonia Kreisel, planner with Vandoval and Associates. I just joined the firm, um, last fall, but I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the village here. And, um, I'll be working with Elise and guiding the comprehensive plan amendments through, um, the process, starting with this year's amendments. So as usual, the first step in the formal process is a resolution before the planning commission, required by state statutes to adopt a public participation plan. So this just outlines the, um, opportunities available for public comment. It includes all of your standard open meetings, um, as well as the required notices and mailings, um, per state statute in order to consider any amendment to your comprehensive plan. So tonight's the first agenda item for that, to kick that off. And the resolution, um, outlines those public participation opportunities. The next formal step, where we'll be before you, is June second with the public hearing. And that's a joint meeting of the Plan Commission and the Board, um, to hold a public hearing on the two amendments. So Elise outlined, um, what those two amendments were, well. And one, again, is the library site. That's about three and a half acres, um, of amended area, contributing to a total site for the library of just over six acres. Um, and the, the amendment for that property is to go from parks and open space to institutional to accommodate that development. And then on the lease property, the, the amendment requested would be to go from the single-family land use designation to planned neighborhood. So the single-family designation, um, at that property would only accommodate densities up to four dwelling units per acre. And it would also only accommodate certain zoning districts, the SR three and the SR four. So this comprehensive plan amendment, um, to planned neighborhood would allow, um, different types of housing units, smaller lots, and would enable a potential planned development zoning for that neighborhood. So the details of each of those projects will be presented further. Um, more detailed maps will be provided at that June second hearing. Um, and we'll be here to guide that through the process and to do all the notices and keep you posted.
Good, thank you.
Any questions for us?
Not right now, she just seems extremely knowledgeable, Sonia, thank you. I'm glad that you're on board, appreciate it.
I do have a question. Do we have a sense of how many units we're talking about in that neighborhood at this point?
It's approximately two hundred, but I think that's just concept at this point. It still works, yep.
Thank you.
Is that, how does that, how is that gonna mesh with the, um, diversity of units that we had talked about and the, um, in the comprehensive plan that we have Oregon? A, a certain percentage of single-family, a certain percentage of multifamily, yada, yada, yada. Um, is that something that still meshes with, with our comp plan, um, based on the change to this area? With the type of housing?
Right.
Duplexes and single-family?
Yeah, I think planned neighborhood has a certain mix. I can't remember off the top of my head what the exact division is between, um, multifamily duplexes and single-family. But the concept plan that we saw, again, had single-family duplexes. I don't believe that planning, um, planned development zoning would be required with planned neighborhood designation, but gives them the flexibility to request different housing types. If they wanted to do alley-loaded, um, units as well, and kind of have a different type of, you know, lot layout and garage entrance.
So it's not necessarily about the types of housing, it's just about how they're arranged?
Right, so the, Elise, you gave a, a good overview there. Um, the planned neighborhood designation, um, it contains a breakdown of different types of housing units as guidance in the comprehensive plan. And it's to be predominantly single-family detached, but then also enable other types like two-family or multifamily. So, um, it does enable different types of housing units. Um, but then through the zoning, you could establish, um, different forms of development. So the shallower setbacks or alley-loaded product. And that would be determined through the zoning process, which would come later, after the big picture comp plan policy.
Okay. And the only other question then I got is ten, fifteen years ago, there was a push to put a business park in Pittsburgh just north of this. And I know that, uh, Pittsburgh didn't have an appetite for that, and I'm sure that they still don't. But what is the desire of Pittsburgh to do with this land?
It's school.
This school, wasn't school west?
No, this is the school property.
The school is north.
Yep, so the school, that's the Donaldson site, um, if you.
I thought it was west.
Nope, yeah, just north, um, of the property here. So we've shared, um, the concept plan that we have from the school district with Veridian to make sure that road connections are happening and everything. And probably down the road, um, there would be, you know, meetings with Pittsburgh Village School District, Veridian, to make sure that we're, um, you know, as they're making plans for the next, you know, ten years, that there might be some development out there, um, that everything kind of links up. And, um, I'm sure it's gonna be not quite as seamless as we, you know, hope it'll be with all the jurisdictions in there. But, um, you know, Sonia was there when the school went through their comp plan amendment process just to make that specific Donaldson parcel, um, the institutional use. But everything else, my understanding is, is just for me, that's agricultural, and there's no, you know, there's no utilities down there. There's no intention from Pittsburgh that there would be any kind of.
Did not know that.
Yeah, this was shared, I think, at a Village Board meeting, maybe, I think, a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago.
Okay, that's the first I've seen of anything out there.
Yeah.
Ever. Other than fifteen years ago when we saw a business park.
Very, very conceptual from the school district. Um, what we've heard, kind of timeline-wise, is that obviously they would need to do a referendum to build any new schools, and the soonest that they think that might happen would be twenty twenty-six. Um, but based on, they work with Roffers to do kind of their school district planning and expectations of how the, um, the district would grow. I think a middle school is anticipated to kind of be the next need. And there'd be some shuffling of the current schools to have more K-five, um, schools, and then two middle schools feeding into the one high school. There was some discussion back when Mike Grace was still here too with the Board. Um, some, I remember, they talked about utilities and kind of having a, an agreement, um, for the village to provide utilities. And it didn't really go anywhere, and there's been a change in leadership at the school, um, district as well. Obviously, is Martin coming on board? So that hasn't, that conversation hasn't been picked back up again.
I'm just curious why, why that wasn't shared with the Plan Commission anyway?
Just because it wasn't, I mean, we probably could have shared it conceptually with you, but.
I thought we had, I guess, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I was involved with the, with the committee. Yeah. That was working, uh, in conjunction with Pittsburgh fifteen years ago, and it was a.
Yeah, I think this.
It had to do, I'm sorry, it had to do with the railroad also at the time.
Yeah. But the property really, they purcha, the school district purchased the property without even talking to the Village Plan Commission or, or Village Board. Um, so we kind of found out about it late in the game. And, um, but I don't think there was anything malicious on their part. I think it was just opportunity, and they were needing, needing land and, and sites for these schools.
I understand it, but they had to also consider utilities. I understand it, but they had to also consider utilities.
Absolutely. I think, I think there were some, Randy, you would say there were some feelings on the board.
I was on the board when we talked, and it was a little, you know, that the issue of, we didn't know they were going to purchase it, and, and, but the, the idea that they need, they need water. And I know we had.
And sewer.
And sewer. And we had a long, we had a long discussion with the Village Board conceptually of how, how are we feeling about that?
And nothing's been decided.
No.
No. It's obviously not a taxable property.
No, but the problem being is that you're extending Village Services and Utilities into another municipality, and that is not always palatable.
Right. That's beyond our purview, so.
Right, this is beyond the comp plan amendment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That'll be a whole nother can of worms. We've got a lot of.
Well, I spent a year on this thing, and it's a little sensitive to some of this.
Whatever, whatever happens down here with the, we'll call it the Veridian parcel, will have to have connections as, as shown here. It may not be this road pattern. In fact, I think.
You'll need some substantial, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you need some substantial streets or something.
Well, this is North Prairie Park, right?
Right, okay, so that's a collector.
That'll continue through. That's going to be a nice, a nice continuation. This is still owned by the Elise family, so that's still being discussed.
It's in Pittsburgh, kind of landlocked.
It's in Pittsburgh. It's landlocked, yes. So that will be, we've got some other ideas on that. But this is, this just shows you where that parcel is, and, and Van De Waal and Veridian are kind of just working through your original ideas and concepts. Yeah.
And I guess all that I wanted to understand was, whatever happens north of there, I, I didn't know that a lot of the school was there. I thought it was on the other side. But whatever happens there to whatever we're going to, whatever the voodoo that you do, sort of meshes with the stuff that's going to happen there, even though we have no control over what happens outside of our municipality.
Outside on the other side.
Knowing that you have some sort of an understanding of Pittsburgh, that's, that's helpful. I, I can take some comfort in that. So that's all.
Okay. All right. Any more questions about this? Absolutely.
So I, I want to ask about, the trustees, we've gotten an email, at least one email about the library, and people have seen that this is six acres. So Elise, can you just sort of address that?
Sure.
Six point nine acres.
Six point nine. Yeah, it did include a nice memo from our library director, Jennifer Way, who's back here as well and can help answer more questions. Yeah, it was supposed to be. I think it's actually on the CSM, which is the next item here. But the reason that the parcel size changed, so one, one thing is, there was a request from the Village Board to incorporate some recommendations from the Oregon Nature Alliance, which had suggestions about, you know, making stormwater management kind of an integrated feature and a kind of a focal point of the site, having, you know, using geothermal and solar, a lot of things that we were already planning to do on the project. But now that we have a little bit more opportunity to sort of plan the site the best it can be, and also save money, and try to figure out how to minimize grading and balance or stay out of the wetland boundaries, optimizing the, the best location for the site, try not to make it stick out too far into the hillside. The site sort of expanded a little bit, also trying to capture geothermal area, which is not going to be under a parking lot, but ended up being just too complicated and too expensive. But a geothermal field, stormwater management pond, the path, there's going to be a bypass path for folks that would not want to cross over the entrance for the new library. The driveway entrance from the path, there'll be a path around the back of the library, and then areas for future expansion, as well as meeting the parking requirements that have been, you know, amended and reduced now. So that total site, we felt it would be best to just come forward with the maximum amount that they might need in the future, rather than come back and have to monkey and amend the site and go through a comp plan amendment process and all that again. So a lot of the land is not going to look developed. A lot of it's just going to look like, you know, prairie that it is today. Again, there'll be paths and a lot of outdoor, you know, just space around the library. So that's why that site grew a little bit. Have been to answer more questions about that, too.
Yeah, I just wanted everybody in the public to understand, because, I mean, the library, all of a sudden, oh, it's gotten, it's gotten bigger now. So.
Right.
So thank you for the explanation.
All right. Great. Are we ready to make a, a motion at all at this point? And that is approval at our level at this point. So we need a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven recommending the adoption of a public participation plan for a comprehensive.
I'll get it.
I'll get it. Now I'm going to finish it.
All right.
Comprehensive plan amendment, okay.
I'll make a motion.
You'll go.
Okay.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, Pat? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is four E, review and possible recommendation of Village Board for a certified survey map for outlet number one and part of outlet number two, Oregon Parks Neighborhood, new public library site.
Okay, I think I've covered a little bit of the area and why the site is needing to be redrawn as a new parcel, designated in a comp plan, and why it's grown. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions about that? Plan Commissioner, even, even the public you would like. Yes, sir.
Is the area that's south of the library site, is that one of the new part of the board's comprehensive plan?
So yes, with the comprehensive plan amendment, the, Jeff can kind of scroll to the actual CSM. But there's basically, right now, two sort of southern parcels. There's the old school site, and then there's the, the next site up. So we're going all the way up to that next property line, making kind of a, a site that wraps around it. And then there's the library site that's, you know, hugging the road there. So in the comprehensive plan amendment, the reason that these are sort of ordered in the way that they are is we have to have a parcel in, that we're changing, you know, the comp plan for. So the remainder of that parcel that's surrounding the library site will be designated as rural holding conservation, which is what all of our parks are. There's no, I think I explained this at the board level, even if it's more of a passive use versus an active use like J.C. Park, all of our parks have rural holding conservation label in our comp plan. So any decisions about management of the land or preventing future development, that would kind of happen through more of a park board decision, and then ultimately, you know, some kind of maybe conservation easement or other types of agreement. But the comp plan itself will at least capture the remainder of that former school site now as parkland rather than institutional.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, we're looking for a motion to recommend the Village Board approval of the certified survey map for outlet number one and part of outlet, outlet two, Oregon Parks Neighborhood. That's for the new library site. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second, Moles on?
Moles on second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number F, review and possible recommendation of Village Board for an extraterritorial certified survey map of property at fifty-five ninety-six Windridge Road, which is the Wilmot property in the town of Oregon. Again, we look, oh, okay. Okay, go ahead and tell us what you want.
Um, yeah, so right now, we have two, what I would consider hot dog style lots.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your name, address.
Wilmot, Laura.
Oh, okay, that's the Wilmot property.
So you know about this.
Fifty-five ninety-six Windridge Road in Oregon. So right now, I'm kind of down that center line. You can see that we have two hot dog style lots. Essentially, they're a mess, to keep it brief with you. We've been going through this with the town for over a year now. When they built it, according to Dane County, there was something jankety filed. Yes, that was the word that they used. And they put our septic system on the lot to the west. So there is a sanitation deed restriction on it. We also, according to Access Dane, have four point zero seven acres. You will notice we do not. We only have three point nine five acres. So we are just looking to combine them into one to fix all the stuff that's wrong with it. I will forewarn you, just so if you see my face again, you're not like, what the heck. The town of Oregon is currently redoing their planning and development plan. So currently, as it sits today, we have no ability to fix these properties without combining them into a lot. So that is what you see here today. That is what we are moving forward with. However, we are trying to get the town board, as well as the Planning and Development Committee, to write in some language that would allow us to fix it without losing our development right on our second plot. I have no update on that, but if for some reason magic happens and they do approve that, I will likely redo this. But for now, it's just combining it into a lot, so.
Interesting thing. Because we don't historic, well, no, and that's fine, because it's not within the Village of Oregon. We have extraterritorial, and we historically do not take a position.
Right. We, we sort of take a non-position or a position of non, you know, issue with the, so we don't necessarily vote yea or nay on this. We just say, we're checking all CSMs just to make sure that whatever changes are happening are consistent with our comprehensive plan, if it reaches out here, that any right of way that's along roads that we might obtain in the future is, you know, noted properly. But thank you for the update on your saga. I'm sure we'll, you know, be keeping our eye on the, on the town's plans later. And, but thanks for being here. Certainly went above and beyond the call of duty.
Certainly that.
I was just going to say, we're Switzerland on this, right? We're neutral.
Yeah, we're.
I need your signatures.
Well, yes, exactly.
Right.
But I'm trying to remember, we, you know, we used to have a, a. Fixed, not fixed, a standard statement we had, and I don't recall, because it's been a while since we've done.
Yeah, yeah, we could go back to including that in the.
And I'd like to find that statement again, is that we don't, I think it's something basic, we don't object to the.
We don't object to it.
Right.
So we essentially need a motion to recommend the Village Board not to object to the certified survey map that was presented in extraterritorial for fifty-five ninety-six Windridge Road.
So moved.
We have a motion, Pat? Second by?
Benno.
Benno. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with that.
Thank you, guys.
I hope your circus music stops soon.
Yeah, come back and tell us it was interesting.
It's been a very long process.
Oh, sounds like it.
I have a question for Elise on, on that, since we, that's typically what we do.
Yeah.
Could your memos include that language, rather than saying, I recommend approval, I recommend we take no position?
Yeah.
That's the sense, that's right. That's we take no position.
Yeah, or do not oppose. Yeah, I can include that in the future for these.
Thank you. Item G, review and possible recommendation of Village Board for extraterritorial certified survey map of tax parcel, you got it recorded, off Netherwood Road, whatever that property is in the town of Oregon.
I don't think we have anybody representing that parcel here tonight.
Maybe I can, you know, we can.
That's beyond, yeah, this is out by Matson Hill Farm out there, but carving a residential property out of larger farm fields, pretty standard. They've got, you know, the development rights to carve out this.
Okay.
Parcel, and has been reviewed by our engineer, and he's comfortable with the.
And again, we'll go with the same thing. I, I suggest that we take, we have a motion recommend the Village Board not to take a, a position of the, of the certified survey map for tax parcel number zero five zero nine zero four four eight five zero zero nine. We have a motion to, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Benno.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other public appearances that are not on the agenda? None. We have no communication missing of business. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. And as we heard earlier, staff report, is there anything that we want to talk about on updates, whatever, Jeff, anything?
No, things, things are going really well. We've got a lot of stuff going on.
Good.
J.C. Park.
Yeah, I, I can give a quick update. We, we are planning on awarding two of the construction contracts for J.C. Park on Monday night, pending Village Board approval. We were able to rebid the site work, and that straightened that kind of mess out a little bit. And so that is moving ahead. We would expect construction probably to start in June, would be my guess.
The bids are public?
Bids are public, yes.
So you can acknowledge, tell us who the, I'm just curious the contractors are.
The contractor, the low bid contractor for the site work was Fisher Excavation. They, they're the ones that did actually the intersection at Park and Janesville.
Oh, okay.
And they, and they also did Lincoln Road for us a couple of years ago. So we've worked with them. And then, I knew you were going to ask me on the electric one, it was like.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I guess. Well, it doesn't.
Electric Corporation?
Electric Construction.
Electric Construction, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I know who you are.
And yeah, our engineers worked with them and stuff. So, so that's exciting. We did just go out to advertise today for the new Village Hall project. So that is out on the street. And we'll be opening those bids on May fifth, and still hoping for a fall of this year where we will be out of this room. Don't write that down.
Oh, it's going down.
It's going in the minutes. But yeah, we're pretty excited.
So the times, the time that's been spent here, because we've, we've acquired the property, so the, the times have been spent has been designing or something?
Well, we had, wait for the bank to move out last September, and then, and then we've been in design with our architects, and working through some details and everything, and then had to cut some out because of budget estimates were coming out way too high.
Had to find your appropriate spot for your office, is that what?
In the basement, yes, in the corner of the basement.
Okay.
But, yeah, no, got a lot of stuff going on in the Village right now.
Yeah, wonderful.
A lot of good things.
Wonderful, wonderful. Upcoming meetings, an important one here is again, the, May fifth is, is again, we'll have. But June second is that joint meeting between the Village Board and for a public hearing for comprehensive plan amendments. Okay, and then Planning Staff, is there anything about the Planning Staff agenda for March, which has already occurred? Nothing. All right. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Benno.
And a second by? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Nice meeting. Thank you.
Who's our second for that?
Me.